Right, with the bike salute.
By the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir. Okay, we'll turn it over to City Manager Knighton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and members of the public. Tonight we'll be doing a work session, the final, the third part of an organization-wide effort to streamline the master fee schedule for the city of Shelton. And I did want to mention on this one in particular, although it's been the case on each of the items we've presented to you on this topic, that the items in blue are not a recommendation from city staff. That will come later. What they are is the actual costs that the city encourages to process each of these individual permits. Wanted to make that clear, and with that, I'll turn it over to Director Ziegler to go through a couple of the highlights.
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, to reiterate, the spreadsheet you have in front of you has existing fees and verbiage that's in black. Red are changes or alterations, additions, deletions that have been included. And blue, you'll see actual costs, all the way on the right side where it says description, staff hours. That's where we tabulated the staff time, hours put into each one of these tasks. So you'll see, for example, senior planner dash two on line seventeen. That means there's two hours of the senior planner put into these functions. And so how we tabulated the, the actual costs of each of these functions. I'll hit on a few highlights, and then open up for questions at any time. As you'll, we'll start with line seven, building valuations. You'll see there's some change to the language in there. I think the, the real meat of this change is instituting a two-year lag in the ICC valuation chart. Currently, we are updating the ICC valuation chart on the annual basis in September. So this would allow for a reduced invaluation for building permit fees. At this point, we'd be using the August, I believe it's August sixteen valuation chart, and that's about an eight dollar per square foot change in a single-family residence, so in R three, a typical construction.
Mark, question on that.
You bet.
If by chance, the market, housing market declined, then in two, you know, assumed it happened over two years, then the exact opposite would occur. The reason it's cheaper is because we've had an appreciation in the last two years.
Potentially, yeah. Looking back to two thousand fourteen, as we, we've seen these valuation charts come out, sometimes they come out twice a year. Back in fourteen, it was one-ten. So they, they did increase a bit. They were stagnant, it never went down, but they did, they, they were stagnant from February fifteen through August of sixteen, and they were the same there. So in R three was one-twelve sixty-five per square foot valuation. So certainly, it could happen, and then we could just, if, if you wanted some language in there that essentially said if it went, you know, if it went down, we would follow that, or something appropriate, I guess, at that, at that time, if that's something the council preferred. Let's see, you'll see some deletions, line eighteen, that's just a redundant fill-in-grade permit that was presented in the Public Works and Engineering Fee Schedule you saw a couple weeks ago. The fireplaces, garages, are valuation permits, same as building permits. So we're really trying to clean this up, make it easier for staff. We have a lot of people that come across the front counter. We don't always have a permit tech or a building official available, and so we have customer service staff that might not deal with these permit processes on a daily basis, all day long, and they can simply get the information out in a much more concise, cleaner process. But also, the, the general public that comes across the table can understand our permit process easier, as well as the fees associated with that. When you, when you see it's based on valuation, we'll get to that, that's back in the valuation chart, which is Attachment A, towards the end of the, of the spreadsheet. Line forty-nine, re-roof permits, would currently charge a roofing permits for, based on valuation. So you'd come in and you'd tell us what the valuation is, how many square, that you have a comp, say a comp roof replacement, how many squares? We'd go to a valuation chart, determine the fee associated with that. We'd like to change that to a, a flat fee for residential roofing permits. Sometimes we get homeowners that come in, they might not know how many squares it is, they might not have all the information available to them. We'd like to get them out the door, in the, in the, in the door, at the counter, and out the door in one quick process, without holding them up on their project. Commercial projects, you have a commercial roofer, and these people are well-versed in the, in the process of roofing and roofing permits, and they will have all the information available when they're coming and submit a permit. And with commercial roofing permits, there is some review, they're not over the counter, so there is some plan review involved in that as well.
Mark, question on the roof permit?
Absolutely.
Just for, to educate me, whether you re-shingle or take it down to re-sheath, is it the same?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, Mark, that says residential only, but let's, let's say somebody wants to just do their garage or something.
That's residential.
Okay, so.
Yeah. Any, any home, any home use, anything that wouldn't be, you know, a, a commercial or industrial application.
And I'm assuming then sheds under two hundred square feet are, are not?
They're exempt. Line seventy-seven, you'll see fire permit fees, those were presented some time ago. We contract with Central Mason Fire, Fire Marshal Services, so they're, they're providing these services. And you'll see, we take in the permits, our permit tech brings those in, they're processed through the city and then forwarded to the Fire Marshal at Central Mason, reviewed there, submitted back to the city at that point, and then they're issued. Let's see, one-fifty-four. That gets into our valuation chart, and this is, the valuation charts are really typical in my experience from most municipal agencies, and, and the fees are fairly similar as well. You'll see a, a basic fee for anything from one dollars to five hundred dollars, so that's a valuation of your project. If you came in with a, you were going to build a house and it was four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, for example, that's the valuation, that basic building permit at this point would be twenty-three dollars and fifty cents, you'd be out the door. If you go down the chart, sorry that it's on the next page, for those that have hard copies, if you had a building permit that was between five-hundred and one dollars and two thousand dollars, there's a base fee of twenty-three-fifty, and, for the first five-hundred, and then three-oh-five for each additional hundred up to that two-thousand mark. So that would determine your permit fee, plan review fee is always sixty-five percent of that, of that permit fee. So as you'll see in the red, what we tried to do here is just clean it up a little bit. We had a lot of odd numbers, as I said, three-oh-five in the five-hundred to two-thousand-dollar permit fees, create that as a three-dollar fee. It's, it's easier to understand, it's easier to calculate, people will come across the front, front counter and say, you know, it's a, it's a good round number, it's, it seems more appropriate, more efficient to, to administer.
Why, and one-sixty-three, why is the jump so big between one-hundred and five-hundred-thousand, when you've got fifty to a hundred before that, twenty-five to fifty, and two to twenty-five? Seems like that's a pretty big jump.
The base fee?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, it's a four-hundred-thousand-dollar difference in the base, so you go from one-hundred-thousand to five-hundred-thousand, then it drops per thousand, as you'll see, it drops from five-sixty to four-seventy-five, so it actually, de, you know, I mean, it's less than, I guess, if you went up as, as per thousand of, of the chart. I, I can't tell you where this was developed originally, I, I believe as far back as, as, you know, as in the mid-nineties, this, the ICC chart has been, has been utilized, and this fee schedule has been utilized. In fact, back in two thousand and fifteen, when I first took, took this position, we were using the exact same fees that you saw here, and those, at least this valuation chart hadn't changed. It might be the ICC chart where you determine the valuation might have changed, and that just changed in September of two thousand and eighteen, for the first time in a number of years, at least in my experience here. But this, this actual determination and, and the, the fee-based chart has not changed in my, my experience.
But fees accounting for that big, for those prices, they go down because?
Correct, absolutely, it's based on.
I didn't get that.
Yeah. You'll see one-sixty-six proposing a maximum building permit fee. So these would be large projects, typically economic drivers, maybe job generators and things like that, that, that would pay a maximum permit fee and hopefully offer an incentive to some of, some of these projects coming into the city of Shelton. Those would be somewhere in the thirteen million valuation range. So anything over that, if you are a twenty-million project, you'd be maxed at the, at the fifty-thousand-dollar. And as you saw, there's quite a few strike-throughs, there's about a dozen fees that were eliminated, some are redundant, some, as I said before, we had some garage permit fees, again, we can handle that within the building permit fee, within a residential building permit, so we felt it was just easier to eliminate those, make this document hopefully a little smaller, a little shorter, a little easier to read, a little less confusing for the public and staff as well. And so those are kind of the highlights that I have for you this evening, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Questions, Mark?
Question about the actuals. I was kind of mulling this over, we were looking at, during our briefing as well, we talked about this a little bit, but kind of mulling over current charge versus what it actually costs staff, and one of the comments I brought up was, I guess, before we really dig into this anymore, we kind of need to understand where we want to sit with the, the split with general fund revenues versus cost recovery vis-a-vis fee structure. My question about this, that actual cost, is it, can I assume that that includes common items like IT services and other things that are used in that? It's not just straight hour-by-hour staff time, it's, it's all of the combined services? And if we come up with some sort of cost pool for those services, or like, how are we, how are we saying like an hour worth of computer time or internet access equals a dollar figure? Is that something that we've determined, or?
That's part of the indirect cost model.
Part of the indirect cost model.
For, for each individual service, the support staff services that other departments provide to the frontline services.
Awesome.
See, I, I had a meeting with Jeff about it, because it's hard for, I mean, if we're going to make a decision on this, I know one thing that kind of freaks me out, because I just take my little calculator, I got a key mark, and I went through, and I just saw some increases here, and on what we're, it's costing us to do, and what we've been charging, and I, the debate was, well, if it costs us five-hundred dollars to do it, we've been charging ten bucks, are, is it, I know these are just, is it your recommendation that we actually jump up to three-hundred and five-hundred percent increases in a number of things on this page? Are you thinking that we should try and recoup all the costs on this? Because some things you've taken out, some things we've added, one was three-thousand for that increase, so I just, I'm kind of.
Which fee was that?
Well, that's on number forty, one-forty. It went from fifty dollars to fifteen-hundred dollars, as far as cost. Now, so I, I guess there's a number of things. One is, I don't know the bottom line, because some of these fees here maybe came from the Dark Ages, I wrote down here, and maybe we should increase them, you know, but I'm, but I don't know how much you took away, and how much you're adding on, and because if we were looking at a, even a hundred percent increase, or five-hundred, or a number of these are three-hundred, one-hundred-and-twenty-five, on this other page, we wrote it down fifty-five percent, one-hundred-and-fifty percent increase. So I'm just trying to say, you know, we got to kind of figure out what rule, form we're going to use in determining this, because those are pretty big increases, if we were going to try and recoup, so you.
So what we'll do next, after we have this work session tonight, I wanted to make sure that the council fully understands the actual costs of providing the services. That's not to say that we are going to recommend one-hundred percent cost recovery. We will come back to council with different options, if you want to choose seventy percent cost recovery and a thirty percent coming from the city itself, and there's arguments to be made for choosing that, and I'll talk through all those arguments with you, make sure that you understand those. But we will come back with options for the council, whether it's sixty percent, seventy percent, eighty, whatever it happens to be, but we are not going to recommend a three-thousand percent increase to any fee.
Yeah, because that was the one example.
Right, but any, any particular fee, that's not something that I don't think we would recommend for a couple of different reasons. One, people wouldn't get the permits, and our code enforcement officer would be inundated with new cases to, to, to deal with. But there's a couple of different reasons, and I'll talk through all those options with each of you, before we bring back a final package for your group.
You see, and if I could, the floor for just a second.
Same topic, or?
Same topic.
Okay.
Is that okay? Not, not totally against raising a fee to a large amount, if we were in the Dark Ages and we were charging ten bucks, and all of a sudden, look, it's costing fifteen-hundred bucks to do this, if we've taken out a lot of other fees, you know, I'm kind of looking over for basic residential construction, starting a new business, you know, and so I'm not totally opposed to this three-thousand percent increase on this one item. But unless we get a balance on what we're doing and not doing, we, I could not okay a fifty percent increase on anything unless I knew there was a fifty percent decrease over here, or that for the general public, that they weren't going to walk in, like, I use the fence example, which is, and you were talking about not having them for residential, but I got a fence permit here about ten years ago, for seventy-five bucks, I didn't care, it was residential, no problem, but then I noticed that the cost to do that was like two and a quarter. Well, some of these people, two and a quarters, run a little strip of fence, you know, I mean, I would probably say I would, that would be fair, but unless we go down every single individual thing, I, it's kind of like a shot, I'm just not seeing a bottom line, how does this really fit in with, you know, so I don't know how we would do this, because, you know, I've said, I'm not opposed to three-thousand percent increase, if we've always just said fifty bucks, and all of a sudden we woke up and said, it costs us fifteen-hundred bucks to do it, is, but mainly, these are not in just simple residential, or, and I don't know if this one is, a site plan review, there's, there's a prime example of it, you know. So we, I think we have to work that in phases or something, you know, because if a builder was doing a site plan review last year, and he came in next year and found a three-thousand percent increase, it would be, you know, pretty drastic, I think. So that's probably all I had to say at this time.
Other questions, comments? Any, just a sec.
Go ahead, yeah.
I just have a question about the annexation fee, what, an example, if we tell somebody we have to annex them, we're going to charge them for that?
No, it's if they apply for annexation, so that's the work associated with staff to process that annexation.
So if somebody's going to build in the UGA, and we say, well, you got to annex them, we charge that fee?
If they request an annexation.
They request it.
Captain, Mr. Schmidt.
So back to the actual cost, cost recovery discussion, do we have an idea, so I'm glad to hear that the, the new indirect cost model was utilized, do we have a rough idea of the percentage of that total number of how much of that is a direct versus indirect cost? I'm assuming the direct cost is more than eighty percent, there, thereabouts?
Yes, it's typically fifteen to twenty percent.
Is the indirect cost?
Correct.
Okay.
With community developments higher.
A little bit higher, yeah.
Yeah. It's nearly, it's over forty percent.
So my follow-up to?
Our utilities are over that, too.
Okay.
Okay. Interesting, okay, so then, good, thank you for that. My follow-up then would be, where, where we may wrestle with a high percentage delta, right, where we have, what we're charging now versus what it actually costs with the combined direct and indirect cost, level of service discussion needs to probably happen as well. Are we actually shooting for delivering that service, or whatever, at, you know, I don't know, using the report card structure, at an A level of service, or are we more comfortable delivering fence permits at a lower level of service, but at a lesser cost? You know what I'm saying? And that would be something else to, to consider, I'm not saying that, that that would mean staff doesn't do a good job on it, that I would just refer to it as, it's a lower priority versus residential, single-family residence, construction, permit reviews, that sort of thing, we want to prioritize that higher, and maybe subsidize those costs out from general fund, recover less from general fund, and then in some of the lower level of service items, recover more of that from a direct cost. I don't know, those are other things that I was thinking, is that typical, or, I, I don't know, am I way off base here in some of your experiences, or?
So, one, we'll have to look into the indirect cost model, and how those costs are allocated, and how they're broken out. For, I am a little surprised that it is at forty percent for community development.
Sorry, thirty, thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five.
I checked.
Well, that's a lot better.
It's a little bit better, yeah. So we'll look into that a little bit, but recovering the direct costs from building permit fees would be one way to go about doing it, and then the indirect cost portion of that, we could take a look at how the city might fund those operations a little bit differently. It's not typical, I haven't seen it before, but I don't see any reason why it couldn't work that way.
And I would think, you know, again, at a high level, the indirect operate, the indirect costs that, you know, any employee, any operation in the city that would be, they would be consuming to do anything, you know, theoretically, that should probably be paid for out of the normal tax revenues that come into the city. The things that aren't, you know, the somebody showing up at the window and wanting something completed, the requests for services, et cetera, you know, then that becomes a, a cost per, and, and there's a direct correlation to what that costs. That's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, but I'm, I'm open to discussion and debate on that, so.
And just, you, Councilor Cronce mentioned, you know, a raise in fee, one where one place offset by a reduction somewhere else. With the lag in the ICC fee schedule, we're talking about a difference in valuation for a three-thousand square foot house of about twenty-four thousand dollars, which would substantially reduce the building permit fee itself.
During the second year?
During, after this is adopted, assuming this is adopted, the way we proposed it, it would go into effect thirty days after the council.
Right, but then, that fee, which you're talking about, because we're doing it every two years, et cetera, in one year.
Right.
Then they take advantage, in the second year, they give a little discount, on the valuation or something.
Right, well, no, the new fee would go into effect immediately, and then we, it would be valid for the next two years until we adopted the new fee schedule.
I don't know, you know what, I don't know how to figure this stuff out, necessarily. I mean, I would just, I, I'll throw up that, whenever I see fifty, five-hundred, three-hundred percent increases in things, you know, and, and that I, I mean, I'm just saying, whether we were really screwed up for fifty years, because it seemed like we've had this argument in the past few years, I mean, I, I did the same game two or three years ago, where I said, wait a second, you know, because we did this, I think it was before, and I says, look at this, I mean, these are all up hundreds and hundreds of percents, what's going on here, and I don't even know what happened after that, necessarily. But it's unusual to me, in my world, of, in anything, seeing something today cost fifty dollars, and then here it costs fifteen-hundred. That's just an unusual thing for my mind to, to kind of grasp, so if everyone else understands it, the problem is, a lot of stuff is, is we kind of pass stuff, are we okay, a certain thing, and then all of a sudden, a guy that's been getting a single-family home permit every year, or five of them a year, is a builder or something, comes in and all of a sudden, it's up five thousand bucks from last year, you know, I don't think we want that.
Right.
So however that translates into some of these Star Wars figures, you know, I don't, I don't know, but I do know that the bottom line is when a guy goes, tried to try and get his fence permit, and it went from seventy-five to two-hundred-and-twenty-five. That would be, I would think, he says, well, you told me last year, it was only seventy-five, that would cause, we don't want that kind of alarm, I don't think, so I just don't know how you do all that stuff, you know.
Well, Mayor.
I think the other thing that I've been grappling with here is, you know, a lot of, and just to clarify, once again, these are not recommended increases, but what we estimate our actual cost is to do this work. So my concern, or what I'm trying to grapple with here is, are there other efficiencies that we can build into drive down our internal costs, rather than increasing our costs to our taxpayers? So, you know, why, and I'm asking the question because I'm not the expert, why is it that we have a site inspection for many of our fence projects? It would seem like that's a fairly straightforward, simple project. Are there other technology pieces that we can adapt, or cross-training, or different things that we can do to drive down our actual cost, rather than necessarily increasing the fees to our citizens? And so that's kind of what I've been thinking about as I've been looking through this, because, you know, costs go up, and we all recognize that, but to Gary's point, I think we also need to consider how that's going to be received from economic development, building standpoint, and how that compares to their experience in other local municipalities. Because if, all things being equal, they're choosing to go somewhere else, that's not going to do us any good if we're talking about infilling and providing housing and jobs and those things, so I guess that's kind of a, an arm of this, and I'm not sure what's the best way to address that at this point.
So, three, three pieces to that. The first is, the ICC, the reduction in the ICC costs will be a substantial savings to people that build here in, in Shelton. Second, the cap on the overall projects, when we're talking about major commercial or industrial projects, will be a substantial cost savings for those types of projects. And third, we're going to look at permits that we currently have on our fee schedule that we issue, when we re-look at and reevaluate our development code, some of those will likely go away. In particular, I'm talking about the fence permit for residential properties. It is a very simple project, we can put some side, side barriers on what types of materials you can use, at a maximum height, and say, you know, no issues unless there's, unless there's a complaint. So those types of things, that's eliminating more fees and streamlining the process for everybody.
I was just thinking of the toilet permit.
Yeah.
Change the toilet.
But I do have a question, are we going to have some financial information before this comes back as a business item?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's the next step in this process.
Okay.
Kevin, you got anything?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Do you have anything?
Well, I was just going to add that, you know, I don't think, at least I hope, that nobody in this room thinks that we can raise these fees as high. We'll all be running out of town, including Dietrich, and we won't be able to eat at any restaurant in town. So we need to, we need to adjust it somehow.
And the other part of that, absolutely, I mean, and there are valid, very valid arguments to not do one-hundred percent cost recovery, and I can walk through all those with you. The, the other part of that, driving down internal costs, I forgot to address that point, lean programs is what we're looking at in order to streamline our operations, doing at least one of those per year, across various operations within the city, in order to make sure our operations are as efficient as possible, and we're developing, or delivering the services that the city provides in the, the most efficient manner that we can.
Well, just one thing, back to what Councilmember Schmidt said, about the seventy percent, or eighty percent, or sixty percent, or whatever, one way that you could bring back information to us possibly, is that here's what this would look like if we let the general fund feed the building department thirty percent back, or, or twenty percent back, this is what it would look like. The other deal is, is, and so that might be one way you do it, I don't really care, but I do, we want to make sure we get it right, because if we, and then the other one, which is most important to me probably, is our basic, then how does this work out for a basic, single-family residence in a neighborhood? What is, what is it cost now, and what is it going to cost? That would probably be one of the biggest ones where we could get a lot of kind of feedback on that stuff. The other thing I'll say real quick is, as, as the extreme example on the, it's basically, it looks like a site plan review here, that's where it went from the fifty to fifteen-hundred dollars that it costs to do it and stuff. A site plan review, could you explain what exactly, that's not, I used to pay three-hundred-and-fifty bucks to go in with a bunch of people like you, and sit down and says, I want to build a duplex, what do you want from me? That was like a pre, was that, is that a site plan review? Is that that little meeting?
Sounds like a pre-submission conference.
Pre-submission.
So that's prior to your application.
Right.
For a, for a permit, whether it's land use or building, and you sit down with staff and run through your project, you can get preliminary information. And you'd sit down with staff and run through your project, you can get preliminary information so you can submit a complete application so it can move through the process and review much quicker and expedite.
That was a good deal. I mean, I didn't really care, two or three hundred dollars if you're gonna build a duplex or something. I mean, I wanna know, at least give me a little heads up on what is gonna, what you want from me in order to do that. But this is, site plan review is something different. So maybe you could explain, why is it, why is it we're charging fifty dollars and it was costing fifteen hundred to do it? Who, how did that happen? I was just curious.
I'm not sure how the original fee was established, and it's something that we just haven't addressed in my time in the department. So it's something through this process and to provide you all the information that you needed to make a good decision, we identified the true cost associated with that. So mostly from the senior planner position, depending on the project and on how it essentially qualifies or plans out, site plan review might be required for that project. Say it's a triplex in a neighborhood residential area, you wanna do site plan review and make sure it meets design standards. We might do it for commercial projects. So they, they meet, you know, design standards, landscape requirements and everything else that might be required for that development.
Well, this kind of feels, I mean, this may be something that I'm not, see, I raised up the three thousand percent increase, but it looks, it's, would that affect every single, a single-family house?
Absolutely not.
This site plan review is, is, so how do you cover up with a fifteen hundred dollar figure? Was that an average? Because I don't understand exactly what a site plan review is.
Some of, some of the, some of these are averages, again. So we have to kind of estimate how much time we spend on an average project. So we get many projects that might cost a lot more than this because it's a, it's a, it's a force of middle and it's incomplete and we have to kick it back a number of times. And it takes, you know, you might hear of projects that might take, you know, twelve weeks for review. It's typically because it's being resubmitted a number of times and it's not meeting city codes, we have to kick it back. If it comes through in a, in a complete submittal, it takes one review, we're kicking it out the door, it might be a little bit lower than what you're seeing here. These are kind of down the middle of the road. If you see a project that required a hearing examiner, say a variance conditional use permit, something that had to go to the hearing examiner, that's an outside judicial process that we have to, we have to pay to have somebody brought in. We estimated that at about twenty-five hundred dollars based on our last five hearings that we've had, they've come in. It could be much more. If it's a large land use project, it could be much more than twenty-five hundred dollars. I believe they charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour plus his paralegal's fees. So they do a lot of research as well as the hearing itself and then derive a decision.
Any other questions?
I do, but go, use somebody else if you want. I just, do we have, is, is the, the people that are putting in the possible five, fifty home developments or even this one that's up across from my school, are they using stock plans? Do we have a discount for stock plans?
We do.
We are doing, yeah, I mean, they are.
It's fifty percent, a plan review fee.
Of, there's just a plan review.
Correct.
Same cost for the building permit.
For the permit itself.
But it's just a plan review fee.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a great idea because in eight months, I'll tell you what, I may be getting my license and you ain't seen the last of me yet. I might be building me some houses, so. I wanna know about these things. Stock plans is a good way to go.
Now, you can't vote on this, Nick.
That's all, there you go. I'll be back in town.
I bet. Just a more inclusive question. On the remodels, fifty percent of the valuation. So if you have a two-hundred-foot room you're gonna remodel, two-hundred-square-foot room, no matter what you're gonna do to it, it's gonna be the same building permit fee, is that correct?
Not necessarily. If you're putting, if you're turning it down to studs, then it may be. If you're doing, if you're doing windows in that room.
That's what I was gonna...
No, then it's, then it's, like I said, that's, right now, it's based on valuation. So if you got a bid from a local glazier and they were charging you five hundred dollars, it'd be twenty-three fifty to replace those windows. If you are essentially, when that comes into play, if the valuation of the project is fifty percent or more of your, of the value of that house or that room, that's when that valuation chart would come in.
Thanks, Mark.
And unless there's a flat fee associated with it, like the re-roof permit for residential, that's just one example.
Okay.
One clarification on the site plan review, the fifty-dollar fee is per one thousand square foot of non-residential floor area. So there's very few thousand-square-foot houses. So the fifty, the fifty-dollar fee may be, you know, if you have a two thousand square foot house, obviously a hundred dollars. And then per residential units, those might be for subdivisions, multifamily, things like that.
Councilmember Schmidt?
So I'm gonna ask the question of, at what point in time do we start our citizen feedback with this? When do we, when do we wanna start that conversation?
So after this evening, I will start reaching out to various stakeholder groups and providing them the information that we've developed and asking for their feedback. Builders groups, individual homeowners that have built projects in the last two or three years, local builders, those types of stakeholder groups, and see what type of feedback they have before we bring something like that back to council.
Yeah, that'd be great. And, you know, one of the questions that's been in the back of my mind for quite a while is, why did the Parsley Paisley, what do we call that neighborhood?
Shelton Springs subdivision.
Shelton Springs subdivision. Why all of a sudden in the past eighteen, twenty months has that, boom? Like why, what happened with that development? You know, what, did the developer provide us any feedback as to, you know, it was because of this or that or it was just the right time for us as a developer? We had no idea there was this, you know, I don't know. It just, it's just that kind of feedback is good when we hear all the negative stuff. You know, of course, it floods, but when development starts to work for somebody, kinda wanna know why it works so we don't screw that up. And, I don't know, it's, it's good feedback to get interested in that.
Well, when they lowered the fees, sixty-five percent, didn't nineteen out of twenty say they did it because you lowered the fees? Including Habitat, that's why they're building?
That was the jumpstart.
I think you presented that.
And again, we, we haven't had a large builder like Shelton Springs. We don't have many spec builders in town. In my experience here, I think, I think they've permitted fifty-five houses so far in that area. And, you know, they, they've built more houses than anybody else combined, multiplied. So we don't have many spec builders coming to town. I don't know how many spec builders are out there anymore, really.
I'm still alive.
That are, that are building on that scale, especially somebody like D.R. Horton, nation's largest builder. They're, they're working on a scale that's much different than anybody else, especially in Shelton and Mason County. I think it's, it's hard to compare apples to apples with somebody like that. I think it's, you know, you look at some of our other builders that are maybe looking at building spec and we've got some, they're starting to kick tires on complete blocks, you know, looking at developing some of those right now. They've seen the economy and they've seen the, the home prices. And so they're, they've been sitting on these properties for some time and are really looking at that. But certainly, it's not the scale of what we've seen up in that subdivision.
Sure, yeah. Just kind of a question there.
And I don't think permit fees frankly affect them too much. They've got, it's a, it's a, it's a machine.
And that's, that's kind of what I was maybe alluding to as well. It seems as if some of the larger growth that has occurred, there may not be that little nugget of info that helps us make a decision here because of the size of the developer and what they have in terms of a margin. I would assume a smaller developer has a much tighter margin than the R. Horton, for example. So, you know, there may be a little bit of wiggle room, but...
The one thing we have heard from them is timeliness.
Timeliness.
Above, even above permit fees. If they, if they know what to expect, they know how long it takes for these processes to occur. They, they can manage their projects much easier than, you know, than the uncertainty or a higher, or a higher fee. That is certainly the case with D.R. Horton. They, they want everything to happen yesterday when they're pre-selling lots and pre-selling houses and things like that. We certainly have that from some of the smaller builders as well. If we have predictability, certainty within our timing and our review processes, they certainly can appreciate that.
Well, they must be fairly happy with us then, right? Or with you?
It's, it's, it's not, not entirely, not entirely right now. It's a really busy time between building, planning and public works. We have seen a bit of a slowdown. We're certainly not reaching what our neighbor, neighboring jurisdiction maybe might be seeing in review times right now. But we're doing, you know, we're doing our best to keep the ongoing projects going as well as any new, new permit processes.
And again, I think the fees are, you know, what we're here discussing tonight. But the other piece of that is that predictability of the process, the quality of service. And what we've talked a lot about, some larger-scale projects and the impact that that has, both financially and within our overall city composition. I guess the other piece of it for me, too, is that I think we need to be mindful of those quick turnaround permits and those smaller maybe items that are affecting maybe our neighborhoods and things. Because not only those are our people who are paying in for the service, but also because we wanna encourage people to take care of their properties and have this be a community that we are proud of. And I think that the more that we can do to streamline that process and, again, let them know what the expectation is and turn things around quickly and allow people to do what they can to create positive atmosphere. I think that's something that we need to keep in mind as well. It's really easy to focus on, you know, those big projects and certainly we need some of those, too. But I don't wanna get lost in some of the other items along the way.
Good point. Comments, questions?
Sorry, the only other thing I'll, I'll ask is when you do provide us some of the financial outlook that I'm chomping at the bit for some long-term forecast there as well, just to kind of see. Because, because we know we will, we know we will hit another economic recession between now and then, whenever that may be. But just kind of looking at a few years out and seeing how these fee changes potentially would survive in a two thousand and eight economic whatever. And then obviously, we hope for not that to occur, but history proves otherwise. So it'd be good is just to be able to see some of that. So when we are setting these, we can kind of look at more of a, like a long-term impact that that may, may serve, so. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
And last thing, is it possible to get this, I know we have it in our packets and things, but just send out in Excel so we can manipulate it?
Sure.
That would be really helpful.
The other thing that would be helpful that Councilmember Schmidt brought up is if we have a breakdown as far as what's direct and what's indirect in some of these fees, or at least in percentage by a group that's supporting the, the project. Or is it the fee?
Because I think last time we were presented with two columns. We were given the fully loaded rate and we were given the IDC.
Right.
So.
Okay. Anything else?
It's been good discussion, thanks. Yeah.
All right. Where, Darren?